Was that go back?
Yeah.
Yes.
I didn't.
Oh.
Billy.
Wires wrapped around there.
I know he wants this.
No, you're ready.
Ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our March eighteenth council meeting. Our first order of business is a call to order and a rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. So please rise.
Pledge allegiance, stood by the United States of America in two republics which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Second order of business is the reading of the Sunshine Statement and roll call by our municipal clerk, Mrs. Lauren Stats.
This meeting of the Denellen Borough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the Courier on January ninth, twenty twenty-five, and as a teleconference was noticed on the official Denellen website on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, and on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, and has remained continuously posted as the required notice. Mayor Solento.
Present.
Council President Sigmund.
Here.
Mrs. Albertson.
Here.
Mrs. Lance.
Here.
Mrs. Rios.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
And Mr. Vandermark noted absent.
Item number three on the agenda is the swearing in ceremony for Patrolman Andrew Mortensen and Eric Ortiz. The two resolutions are number one thirty-five and number one thirty-six. Before we motion in second to them individually, I'm going to ask that Lieutenant speak to the council about the candidates.
Patrolman Mortensen is thirty-one years old and a resident of Thorpe River. He's engaged with his fiancee Jane, and they are due to be married this fall. Patrolman Mortensen is a graduate of the Ocean County Police Academy. He was first employed as a class two officer by Seaside Park Police Department, and most recently at the Island Heights Police Department. Patrolman Mortensen Mortensen is excited to further his career in the role of union.
You want to just do both at the same time?
Okay. You're next. Patrolman Ortiz is twenty-seven years old and a resident of Union Township. He is a graduate of Union Senior High School and holds a BA in criminal justice from King University. Patrolman Ortiz is a recent graduate of the alternate route program in Monmouth County Police Academy. Has excited me as well of course my career in Denellen, adding another bilingual officer to our department. What do you have?
Can I have a motion in second on number one thirty-five?
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Rio Sigmund. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lance.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Can I have a motion in second on number one thirty-six?
Move it, Rios.
Second, Albertson.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lance.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mortensen, start with you, sir.
Let's go right in the center so you, him has got a nice shot. How about that?
Do we have the oath of allegiance?
And repeat after me. I, Andrew Mortens. I, Andrew Mortensen, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations. I, Eric Ortiz.
I, Eric Ortiz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to your governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
And under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Before we continue, I'll just say, thank you, Officer Mortensen and Officer Ortiz for joining the Denellen Police Department. You're going to be amongst some of the, well, all of the best in our area, and I would say the state itself. The mayor council here, support and back the blue, and that's unwavering, and it's never going to change. So you have our full support and endorsement. So God bless you. Please stay safe and congratulations, and you're learning from some of the best here. So good luck to you. You're welcome. You are more than welcome to stay, but if you don't want to listen to a council meeting, you don't have to, so. There's a lot of great eateries in Denellen, so enjoy one of them.
When's the big day? Fall wedding, those are great.
Was it something we said?
Remember, we are on record still.
Well, you know, it's a county here to hold meetings.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, item number four on the agenda is our, the approval of our meeting minutes, our regular meeting of March third, two thousand twenty-five. Kind of a motion in second, please.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Any edits, comments, redactions to the meeting minutes as they currently stand? Okay, without hearing any, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Albertson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lance.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Item number five on the agenda is the adoption of ordinances. Tonight we have twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, an ordinance to amend and supplement the general legislation of the Borough of Denellen, Chapter two zero two, Public Parking, Section eighteen, Handicapped Parking. Can I have a motion in second?
Move it, Rios.
Second, Albertson.
We'll open the floor to the public to only comment or question twenty twenty-five dash zero eight. We ask that you please state your name and address.
So somebody going on. Want to hear the bank.
Okay, without hearing any members of the public, I will open the floor to mayor and council discuss twenty twenty-five dash zero eight. Just so everybody remembers, this is a handicap parking being added in front of Saint Nicholas Visiting Catholic Church.
On Madison.
On Madison Avenue. Okay, without further discussion, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Albertson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lance.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Okay, item number six on the agenda is resolutions. We have one thirty-seven through one forty-one. Mrs. Stats, if you could read through them and let us have the opportunity to discuss them if needed.
Resolution number one thirty-seven is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lance.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution one thirty-eight is authorizing the municipal clerk to administer all temporary retail food establishment permits for the open air market from May fourth, twenty twenty-five to October nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson.
Abstain.
Mrs. Lance.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution number one twenty, one thirty-nine is to award a contract to CME Associates to perform engineering services for the rapid rectangular flashing beacon installation improvement project and the South Washington Avenue and New Market Road pedestrian improvement project.
Move it.
Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
As everybody recalls, this is part of the one hundred and seventy thousand dollar grant that we received for the push-button rectangular pedestrian crossing signs that will be at Grove and New Market and as well as South Washington Avenue and Orange Street, right? Add a blank. Orange Street. So this is them to begin the services around that. And again, we have a hundred and seventy thousand dollar grant that the state provide this.
Okay, resolution, oh, sorry, I'll take a roll call. Mrs. Albertson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lance.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution number one forty is a resolution to authorize the release of a performance guarantee to Communipaw Associates LLC, which is one fifty North Avenue.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lance.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution number one forty-one is awarding a contract to Cafrey Entry Landscape for tree installation and transplant in the downtown and not to exceed ten thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lance.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Okay, item number seven on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have resolutions one forty-two through one fifty. I'll let council have a few moments to read through them. If there's anything you want to identify and pull out, just please let us know for record, and then we'll vote on the rest as consent. Without hearing any, can we have a motion in second on the consent agenda, one forty-two through one fifty?
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lance.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Okay, item number nine on the agenda is council reports. Councilmember Albertson.
Okay, fire department is hap, department is happy to see a number of residents joining the department in the past few months. The new members will be attending fire school in the upcoming months. The fire department is still looking for new members to join our department. Membership is open to anyone sixteen to eighteen as a junior member, and full member is open to anyone over eighteen. Visit our website, www.denellenfd.com, or email joindfv@denellenfd.com for more information. The Friends of the Denellen Public Library on March twenty-fourth at six thirty PM. Stop by the library for George and Martha Washington, A Love Story. This live performance is free to the public. All proceeds from Friends fundraising events help to provide programs such as this, as well as Museum Pass's summer reading program events and prizes and so much more. Follow the Friends on Facebook and Instagram, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Rios.
Yes. Registration for the twenty, oh, sorry, Board of Ed, registration for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six preschool year is now open. For more details, please visit the Denellen School website. Read Across America was a great success. Special thanks to you, to Ms. Willoughby, for organizing and hosting the dignitaries of Denellen and surrounding towns. During the March eleventh meeting, a tentative budget presentation was reviewed. If you have time, I encourage you to take a look at the proposed figures. For any questions regarding the board's budget, please visit the school website at denellanschools.org, or contact Superintendent Dan Ross directly for more information. Next board meeting will be April eighth at seven PM. Denellen Public Library offers a variety of exciting programs for all ages. For children five and under, join us for our Saturday musical storytime at ten thirty AM. If you can't make it on Saturday, we also have musical storytime every Thursday at ten thirty AM, plus Twilight Storytime on Tuesdays at five fifteen PM. For older kids, tweens, and teens, don't miss Gaming Day every Thursday at three thirty PM. In addition to our great programs, Denellen Public Library offers a variety of helpful services. We provide faxing, copying, printing, notary services, and a range of items for checkout, including Chromebooks, hotspots, headphones, and cassette players. Visit us on Facebook or our website, or stop in person to discover what's new at the library. Buildings and ground report. The multipurpose office is anticipated to be finished by the end of this week. The Department of Public Works has cleared the trash, tall brush surrounding the fieldhouse. Two emergency fire exit signs were replaced in the fieldhouse. The security camera system at Columbia Park, which is shared with the Board of Ed, is approximately seventy-five percent complete. Parsa report. Parsa is continuing the CCTV inspection of our sewer system with their current focus on North Avenue, and that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Lance?
Yes, from Recreation. The Recreation Easter Egg Hunt is scheduled for Sunday, April thirteenth at one PM at Columbia Park, exclusively for kids in pre-K through third grade and Denellen residents. Participants should bring a basket and can take a photo with the Easter Bunny afterward. The spring open soccer program is still seeking parent volunteers for weekly practices that vary by coach availability. Coaches are still needed for pre-K to K, first through second grade, and third grade to fifth grade. Denellen Recreation is introducing a new adult recreation tennis program for residents aged eighteen and above, starting April sixteenth and running through June eleventh on Wednesday nights from six thirty to eight PM at Columbia Park Tennis Courts. The program is free for Denellen residents with a fifteen dollar fee for out-of-town participants, and registration is required. Softball and baseball season is right around the corner. Softball season opens on April fifth with rookie and minor league teams competing in the Somerville League. Denellen's annual opening day parade and ceremony will take place on Saturday, April twenty-sixth at ten AM, starting at Washington Park and ending at McCoy Park, where the ceremony will be held. Teams should gather at Washington Park by nine forty AM, and that's all.
Okay, thank you. Council President Sigmund? Yes, at the previous meeting, I was requested that I work on the document that the Shade Tree Commission puts out, adding language about what to do if the trees are not doing well, and if you need them removed. So I am working with Ken to add that information to the already five-page-long document, information document that goes out. So we are working on that, and we'll have that out soon. Okay, thank you. Anything else? That'll be all, other than just my, I guess, monthly reminder to volunteer as a coach. You don't have to be a, a great athlete to be a great role model. And that's all. Okay, thank you. Councilman Scott?
So the DPW has routinely cleaned the downtown borough parks and properties. They continue to clean and inspect the catch basins throughout the borough. They're working on the multipurpose office, brick repair around the new downtown trees. They walked the brooks and streams and cleared debris as needed. They cleared the catch basin lids throughout the borough after the recent storms, and then, most importantly, cleaned debris from the trash trap. They began the ballfield prep work on the ballfields in preparation for the sporting season. And the mechanics division has serviced the police fleet as the maintenance is required or breakdowns arose. Sir, also serviced the PPW fleet. They've begun removing the snow equipment, cleaning the spreader units, adjusting the chains, bracing the pivot points, and coating the chain with anti-rust agent to prepare for summer storage. And they begin readying the summer equipment for usage, servicing, adjusting linkages on the sand pro unit, and ready the ballfields for the upcoming baseball softball opening day. And a reminder, curbside branch pickup takes place March and April. So after that, you have to bring in the public works. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Lost my page. Okay. Merrill Town Hall, our first one for the year is on volunteerism. The next Merrill Town Hall event will take place on Wednesday, April twenty-third at seven PM at the George W. Hodglick Firehouse located two thirty-one South Madison Avenue. The Borough of Denon offers a variety of opportunities to get involved in our community through our various volunteer boards and commissions. And always remember, you don't have to necessarily be a voting member to be involved. You can still volunteer with them. Attendees will hear directly from some of our many volunteers to learn more about their roles and enhancing our community and how you can get involved. You can join us in person or online through Zoom. If you're interested in attending, you can RSVP at tinyurl.com backslash Denellen Town Hall, and all that information will be released publicly. New Jersey American Water, Prospect Avenue, from Grove Street to Center Street, and Whittier Avenue, New Market to Center Street, Phase One of the project started on Prospect Avenue near Grove Street intersection and will continue south towards Center Street. The phase, this phase includes the installation of new water main and new water services and fire hydrants to each home. Second Street Phase One, which is Second Street from Madison Ave to Schwartz Place. We had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, CME and Borough Staff on March sixth. We expect to hear from the contractor this week regarding a start date for the project, so stay tuned on that. Washington Avenue Streetlight Project. We also had a pre-construction meeting with CME, the New Jersey Department of Transportation, PSENG, and Borough Staff on March sixth. The NJDOT and PSENG are working on some detailed electrical work near the intersection of North Ave and Washington Ave. Once that's completed, we'll expect a start date for the project. This project will include new LED decorative light poles and a tree scape on Washington Avenue from Denellen Avenue and First Street, and from North Ave to the railroad bridge. And again, this is part of one of the New Jersey Transit Village grants we received a couple of years ago. A report from our engineers, six thirty-five Boundbrook Road, bid will be received on March twenty-seventh at eleven AM in the council chambers. Councilman, you, President, you spoke to the rescue squad to stay up to date with the administration, even though we report this out every single meeting. Okay, and just for the record, Council President Sigmund is going to be the Rescue Squad's interim liaison. So he will be handling some of the business work with them, but redevelopment matters will go through administration. So it'll be nice to see that all start getting done. Comcast, oh, I will note too, because I saw some comments saying on Facebook, yes, it's being remediated. Yes, it's going to be done to DEP standards, because we have a DEP grant, and even so, DEP is involved heavily, regardless if we had that grant or not. So any conspiracies around that, let's damper those down, okay? Public, thanks. Comcast Works, CME continues to monitor the ongoing work by Comcast. There's a TA set aside grant that comes available every few years. So CME has submitted costs for the TA set aside grant application to do in May. A pre-application meeting is scheduled for March twentieth, in which they'll attend at two PM. And basically, what we've submitted every year for this, because they, we have a, we already have a project basically modeled out for it, is improved street scape along Route twenty-eight, so. So that's, that's going to be the proposed project. Lighting agreement with PSENG, CME has helped the borough modify the lighting agreement with PSENG in relation to the DOT changes for ADA improvements. The DOT is requesting confirmation on some of these modifications, so we'll report back on that as information becomes more available. New Market Road and Walnut Place. Place, Walnut Ave, Walnut Street. I grew up on that street. Why did I put place? Walnut Street Intersection. CME inquired about the status of the project with the county. A signal agreement resolution may be adopted at the March Commissioners Meeting. As you remember, we put forward a resolution and approved that the town would be interested in working with the county on easements and ensuring that a traffic light gets put on the corner of New Market Road and Walnut Street. So the county is also preparing a scope of work for construction documents and selecting a consulting firm. So it's a step in the right direction, but for the public that is counting on this intersection to have a traffic light, it's going to take a little bit longer just because the bureaucratic system that we have to go through to get it done. New Market Road and South Washington Avenue intersections. The engineers awaiting a response from the county regarding the operations review for this intersection. If, if council and the public remember, we put in a request for them to review again the new traffic light at the Nell and Crossings project, the Denellen Station, and where it meets New Market, because as they come out, make a left off the New Market across the street. It's, I, the only reference I can have is Frogger. Unfortunately, so we've been requesting that the county look at it and re-time everything, and I mean, we've made the recommendation that maybe the light sets red for several seconds, so people can have enough time to cross all directions. We'll see. They're reviewing it. That's my main report tonight, but I would like to note, I watched the, not the immediate past Board of Education meeting, but the one prior. I think there was a presentation done in which a question from the Board of Education president was, the influx of kids, is it coming from all the redevelopment? I will put on record, it is a variable. You know, it's about fifty kids last time we checked last in December, which is the fourth quarter of the year for us. I believe it's their second quarter, and so about fifty, which is actually twenty-five percent less than what's been projected based upon the projects that have, are open and operating. So it's a variable. I would note, based upon observation, that a lot of our single-family homes have sold over the last several years. Where older constituents, residents, were living. over the last several years, where older constituents, residents were living and everything is cyclical. Um, so they moved out or unfortunately may have passed, and so younger families are moving in. And they have children, and I think in it, you can, if you drove around on Christmas Eve with the fire department, it was past years, it was like just a handful of kids on three block radius. And this year it was like every house almost had a kid running out. So it's a sign that our town is becoming younger, younger families. And I would argue that, uh, more children in the school district is a sign of a healthy school system, which is a sign of a healthy community, which is a great pillar for our property values. Um, so while yes, the redevelopment will attract school age children, we're not lying about that, never have. It's been transparent from the day every project is discussed. It's not attracting the majority of students that we're seeing come into the school district. Um, so I'll note again on the record, every time a project comes to come online, we provide that information to the school district. We have a great line of communication with the superintendent and business administrator. They provided the address and the projected number. We both have a joint tracking system, um, and so every so often we'll check in with the school saying based upon the project, how many kids, we do comparisons. And so we can say again, we're about twenty five percent underneath the overall projection for all projects that are open to date. Um, so, which I think last time again was around fifty. So, um, I just think it's important to note that, because we are going through revitalization of our downtown that has mixed use development. Um, and I just don't like the, I don't want to put the perception or allow the perception to be out there that the influx of kids are all just from the redevelopment projects. So it's a variable, but it's not the majority. Okay, so just wanted that on record. And I look forward to seeing more about the budget.
I, I highly recommend you just look at those numbers, see what, you know, what they're working with.
Okay. Do you know the numbers?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, we, you wouldn't mind reporting back and we'll, I, again, counsel employees to watch the meeting, just like I implore anybody to watch our budget meeting, which is happening on April, April seventh, so. Um,
I do have a follow up question about that. There's time. Um, so you said that was asked to the Board of Ed? Or that came from the Board of Education, that question about how many kids are coming in?
It was a question pertaining to a study that was done about the percentage of increase of students that have come into the district, which is appropriate, not, no one's questioning that. Um, but the question from the board member was, could we argue that the, the influx of students, the number, the whole, it, I wish I didn't say the whole number, but the influx of the student number was from the redevelopment projects. And my response back is, it's a variable, but it's not the majority, and we're actually twenty five percent underneath what was projected.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd have to go back. Um, I think it showed, is it about thirteen or fourteen hundred? It might be, um, you know, again, I, I, I'm not complaining about school age kids. I think a robust school system is a good thing. I, I, so, um, I just don't want the perception out there that their school population has drastically increased because of redevelopment. It's a variable. No one's arguing that. We'd never say it wasn't going to be. It's just not a majority of the population increase that the school has seen. So, okay. Anybody else? Okay, wonderful. Uh, next item on the agenda would be, uh, number nine, council discussion. I don't see anything on the agenda, so I guess we're moving on from that. Item number ten is department head reports, legal.
Uh, no report there.
Okay, thank you. Flirt. Actually, yes, you do have an update, so make sure that's on. Because this is an important one.
Uh, the school made a request last month to relocate the election out of L M S, and it has been approved by the Board of Election Commissioners. The new polling locations will be District one and two at the Denellen Senior Center, which is two sixteen Orange Street. Districts three and six at the Denellen Firehouse, which is three twenty one South Madison Ave. And districts four and five at the Denellen Public Library, which is one hundred New Market Road. The borough will notify all the registered voters that are affected by this change by mailing out letters in the next couple of weeks, informing them of their new polling location. We also post this information on our website and Facebook page. And on the day of the elections, there will be a sign at the school informing the public if they do go there, the change of the polling locations as well.
Hi.
And that is it.
Thank you, and there'll be ample enough notification beyond. We will continue to make public announcements here uh, through our website, through the mayor's message. We also have, if you can write something for the Denon Report.
Sure.
Um, and that'd just be additional, and the school did agree that when primary date comes, there will be, it will be posted on site.
Correct.
Everybody knows where their voting districts are.
And there'll be a map up there as well.
Perfect, so. Okay.
And in the letter, we'll be also sending a map too, just in case, no, if they don't know their polling location, and they could always call the clerk's office too.
Thank you.
All right, I found, we found Ryan counseling the numbers here. Um, so in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, Faber had four hun, uh, sorry, six hundred and forty kids. Currently, there's six hundred and twenty, so that actually dropped. In, um, L M S, they had three hundred and thirty three, now there's three hundred and thirty six, three kids. And Denellen High School, that's four hundred and one, now there's four hundred and twelve. So.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to put my comment on record, because that, that question was asked on their record, so I just think it's appropriate. Um, so, okey doke. Uh, administration. Okay, uh, police? Anything going on in the tax office back there, Dawn? Okay. Uh, okay. Okey doke, so I, we hit everybody up. Okay, item number ele- eleven on the agenda is public comments. We ask that the, you know, if you're here in chambers or online, please state your name and address. We're here to answer your questions, hear your concerns. Okay, thank you. Um, well, there's, um, a resolution enter into executive session, so, um, there's no further action to take place. Okay, there's no, we do not anticipate action to be taking place after Resolution one fifty one, which is to enter into an executive session. Um, we will go offline, I guess you can say, for the executive session. And then we will go back into public session, noted again that there's no expectation of any further action. So can I have a motion and a second for Resolution one fifty one?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Okay.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamb?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. We will, uh, be going into executive session and then we will be coming back out of it, so, um.